Up the meeting is now seven oh three P M on Tuesday, March seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three. And it's a virtual Zoom meeting of the zoning board of appeals with town of Cohasset. So, um, I'll call a meeting to order and uh, I'll start off by saying, uh, I'll ask who's present. Woody Chitikai.
Hey, McMorrissey.
That Watkins.
Lee Darstai.
Michael Dickey.
And Charlie, you're muted, so we can't hear you. Charlie, can you hear us? Well, we'll start with us and Charlie can join us when he's unmuted.
Uh, hey, hey, Woody, uh, just quickly, I think we talked a couple meetings about a, a signing responsibility for drafting the decisions. Set of uh, various hearings.
Do it upfront as opposed to after the fact?
Yeah, yeah. That would frankly, that would allow me to better notes if I know I'm gonna be called on.
Guess what? We've got three decisions from Matt, Lee, Charlie. I don't see one from Mike. So yes, you're gonna get one. Okay, we have two uh, that are three that need to be assigned, actually. One of which is uh, Hobson Putzaker for a dock at thirty Beach Street. I'm, I'm due up to write a decision, so I'm, I'll take something, but I'll give it up to you guys first. Anybody want that one?
I, I've, I've done a couple docks before, although I won't uh, claim to be the dock guru the way Matt is, but uh, I've.
Spread the wealth, isn't it, Matt? I mean.
Yeah, I think we have a couple docks tonight, right?
Yeah, we do. I, Mike, I can put you down for that one.
Okay, wait, wait, which, which is uh?
That's thirty Beach Street.
Okay, good, good.
I'll have to take um, thirty Forest Notch, because you're recused on it.
Yes, that's right. So it looks like it's up to me to do the um, Baranowski at fifty-five Black Horse Lane, the special permit. Okay. So those are signed. Good. Thank you, Mike, for that, because that does kind of get the attention going uh, directly. So we've made those assignments, so let, let's start. We have three hearings that have been continued. And um, I will ask uh, very quickly, um, if there's anybody here from first forty-nine James Lane and, and then if there isn't or is, Cassandra, you can tell us if we received any new material.
You have not received any new material. Kellyanne is in the audience if you would like to pull her forward.
I'll ask uh, I'll promote you, Kellyanne, but only if there's something uh, new to add um. But if it's just, I'm here and on a special permit, et cetera, um. No need. But the hearing is open. We will, we'll close it if, if there's not, nothing new to consider. All right.
I will uh.
I would make a motion to um, close the hearing at forty-nine James Lane. They moved and seconded. All in favor? Woody Chitikai?
Charles Aggins and I. Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darstai.
And Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Matt Watkins, that was the one. Okay, ne- next one is um, I'm recused from this one. It's the uh, Burris uh, Modest uh, hearing at ADA Nichols Road. Uh, so uh, at least quickly um. Well, Lee, why don't you take over? Oh, no, Dave, I, I think it's vice uh, chair.
Actually, Woody, I think it was the seventy-six Summer Street, the one that I had stepped in on that you were recused from, right?
Yes. Okay, I guess I was wrong. ADA Nichols Road. Okay. All right, I'll take this, you know, yeah, we'll just, uh, is there anybody out there in the audience who wishes to speak, Cassandra? Any new materials received?
No new materials received. Um, I don't believe there's anybody in the audience.
Okay. I'd make a motion to close this hearing at ADA Nichols Road.
Seconded.
Okay, moving seconded, Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Oh, I think it's an eye.
Lee Darstai.
Okay, so that hearing is closed. The next one, uh, you're right, I am recused in this one at seventy-six Summer Street. Um, uh, Santa Croce to raise and reconstruct a detached garage. So Dave, would you take over this?
Matt, Matt chaired this one last time.
Oh, he did. Okay, Matt, would you take over?
Yep, sure, no problem. Um, yeah, so the applicant was represented by Jeff Hassett. I do see Jeffs in the audience. Um. Cassandra, I don't think we received any new material since the last hearing, right?
We did not.
I think um, yeah, I looked in my notes. I think the only thing we had from Jeff that he was gonna send along was like uh, the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission.
Sorry, I apologize. He did send that.
Okay. I don't know if we, we're gonna promote Jeff or just we'll, we'll close.
Do you?
Yeah, why don't you promote Jeff? Jeff, just to make sure he doesn't have anything else and then pending that he doesn't, I will uh, make a motion. Hey, Jeff.
Hi, Matt. Good evening. Um, no, I don't have anything new to add to this. Um, we haven't changed anything since we met back in February.
Okay, great. And yeah, thanks for sending in the order of conditions. It sounds like we received that, so. I would uh, make a motion to close the hearing on seventy-six Summer Street.
Yeah, can I, Charlie Aggins and?
Moved in second and all in favor?
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darstai.
Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I. Okay, it uh, that concludes, I believe, our um, continued hearing, so we can bring Woody back.
All right, so I'm back now and the first order of business is one eighty-five Jerusalem Road, which is a dock um, filed uh, two hearings ago, but they have requested again for a continuance. Um, do we have, uh, is it just a simple request for continuance or were there any conditions, Cassandra, or anything beyond that request?
Just a simple request for continuance. The applicant is um, employed Adam Bronski. Um, so I'm sure that he needs some time to come on board and look at all the materials before presenting to the board.
I see no reasons personally not to um, abide by the applicant's request to continue it. Does anybody have an objection to continuing this hearing until April?
No.
Nope. Okay, so I'd make a motion to continue this till April. Is Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Charles Aggins and I.
Lee Darstai.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, so that's been approved to continue it till April. Um, the next hearing, now we come into sort of new hearings, is a special permit filed by Peter Hobson and Susan Putzaker for a dock at thirty Beach Street. Um, who's going to be presenting this one.
So we have Caroline from Merrill who's going to be presenting.
Okay. Go ahead. Let's promote her and make her audio to work to, there you go.
There we go. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
For the record, my name's Caroline Reese from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors in the Norwell office. I'm representing the applicant, Peter Hobson, and the homeowner, Susan Putzaker of thirty Beach Street. And they are requesting a special permit and zoning relief to uh, construct a dock in the floodplain and watershed protection district. Oh, and would you like me to share my screen?
Sure, I think it would be helpful.
Sure. Am I okay, Cassandra? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, there it is. Here we go. Um, can y'all see the site plan here? Okay, fantastic. I'll make it a little bigger. So this is the lot. It's approximately eleven thousand four hundred square feet on thirty Beach Street. Um, north is kind of directed towards Little Harbor. Uh, and they are requesting um, relief to build a dock for private residential use extending from their rear yard wall into Little Harbor for access there. Um, the proposed dock is about, I'll see if I can make this bigger, um, fifty-one feet long and it has a removable gangway and a removable float. The pilings above mean high water, which runs along this um, concrete, existing concrete wall. There are about three pilings, so about three square feet of coverage above mean high water. And the maximum height of the dock, I'll scroll down here, with railings at the far end is about twelve point two feet. Um, we're here because the entire, virtually the entire property is in the floodplain and zone B. And uh, this will be just used uh, um, incidental to the residents for recreation. And with that, I guess I'll return it for questions or comments.
Um, the application says nine point seven, uh, but nine point seven has a number of letters uh, or subsections.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine point seven E. I wasn't sure if I should specify.
No, I think it would be, uh, well, why don't you speak to us about why you think you comply with uh, nine seventy?
Okay, because it's an incidental use to the primary use. Um, nine point seven E provides that the board may authorize in the floodplain and watershed protection district by special permit, uh, a non-residential structure incidental to um, an approved use, and it includes a private dock um, under this provision. And it is a home. It is, um, the square footage is less than two hundred square feet, much, much less, and the height is, does not exceed the twenty-foot um, parameter that's required on nine point seven B. That's correct. It's a small dock. Did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, uh, for me, I mean, let's board.
Looks like you're well off the sidelines. So that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Can you see it okay?
Yeah, it looks between the private use, the ground coverage and the sidelines, so.
Oh, yes, the sidelines, of course, uh.
Look to be in good shape.
Yeah. Oh no. Why am I cursor? If I bring this over, I got a table up top. Ah, I don't know why my cursor just does that in meetings. Um, up here, if you can read this table, I can expand it. That has a lot of the pertinent dimensions. Um, but from the side, it, it is about approximately thirty-seven and forty-eight feet from each sideline.
Seem pretty much to comply with the conditions that we look for, but what do you think, Matt?
Yep, I would agree. Yeah, it looks like I don't have any issues with it.
Is there other information the board would like of the applicant or representative?
I assume they haven't done the chapter ninety-one stuff yet.
No, we just got uh, the conservation approval. I think it was February sixteenth or seventeenth and, and I submitted the revised plan. That's what we have here. And then after approval in the municipal level, we'll start with the chapter ninety-one. Application.
Okay. Uh, Cassandra, is there anybody out there in the audience that wishes to speak?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I was not sure if the uh, applicant or homeowner made it. This meeting's moved.
Well, no, I know it's moving more swiftly than.
Which is great.
We expected. Um.
Have, have, have all uh, the butters been this and given an opportunity to comment, that sort of thing?
They have to be.
Verdi Cassandra, yeah. Um, well, yes, uh, they were notified of the hearing.
Have we received from anybody? Any letters or phone calls in this?
Not for this project, no.
Oh, that, that's a good sign.
Yeah. Well, that, you know, it's our, it's our practice to, as you're probably aware, um, to continue a hearing uh, until the, the next general session, which is in April. So that we can um, consider and vote on a draft, most likely at that meeting, rather than run into sort of a time crunch if we close it now, so.
Certainly.
I would, under the, under this, under these circumstances, propose that we uh, take a vote to continue this until our next hearing. We have a person assigned to do a draft decision and which we will consider at that po- point. Uh, it, it's open, so you're still welcome to supply anything else, but I, I mean, it's pretty uh, as they say, cut and dried.
Yeah, um, would you need me to attend the next meeting if no new material comes up?
It's not required. Uh, if no new material comes up and you have no comments to make, we'll close the hearing, at which point you won't be able to make.
Did you guys eat a little pizza?
So.
Right, sure.
Did you share it with the other guys?
I don't know. What's, what's, what is this?
Matt needs to be muted.
I just muted him.
He's being a good dad. Okay. All right, so I would make a motion to continue this hearing until, was it April fourth? Is that the? April fourth. Yeah, uh, twenty twenty-three. Okay, moving seconded, Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darstai.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, moved and seconded and approved to continue this. Uh, Mike Dickey has agreed to do a draft decision, which we will consider at that meeting, but not tonight. Okay. Next one is a, another dock filed by Lynn Baranowski at fifty-five Black Horse Lane. Again, a nine point seven as well as a four point two. So who's representing this applicant? Is there anybody out?
I'm gonna guess that it might be Jeff. Okay, it is Jeff. Hold on.
Now, let's promote Jeff then. I think we've got a full house here. Okay.
Hey, good evening again. Hi, Jeff Hassett here, civil engineer with Morse Engineering. Um, here on behalf of the property owner Lynn Baranowski. And we filed an application for a residential dock. We filed a special permit um, in accordance with sections four point two and nine point seven E. Um, as the dock is within the Cohasset floodplain and watershed protection district. Um, I will share my screen and the design. So when you're coming down Black Horse Lane, uh, fifty-five Black Horse is on your right-hand side when you're coming from Summer Street. And they also own the property on the opposite side of Black Horse Lane, which has about a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the Gulf. Uh, the dock is made up of, beginning in the lawn area, um, a pier that's a hundred and forty-eight feet long going over the salt marsh. Um, from there, there's a removable gangway that's two feet, uh, three feet wide by twenty-four feet long and a removable ten by twenty float. Uh, the property is in the RB zoning district. The pier is centered on the property, so it does comply with the setbacks. Um, so we are really here just for the request of floodplain and watershed protection district. This design, it um, has been designed in accordance with the D E P guidelines for residential docks. And it's also consistent with other docks that have recently, recently been permitted in the area. Uh, the design has been approved by conservation and following local permits, it will also require approvals from the Army Corps of Engineers and the D E P waterways for a chapter ninety-one permit. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay, um, you wanna uh, uh, help me out in terms of the relief you're gonna need under four point two? I understand under four seven, I mean, nine point seven, is, is that again, nine point seven E or some other provision of nine seven?
Yeah, so four point two refers to the uh, table of use regulations. And a um, a, a private re- uh, residential dock requires a special permit. Um, we've also asked for a special permit in accordance with section nine point seven E. Uh, we feel it does meet the criteria because it's a, a non, non-residential structure incidental to any of the uses allowed in that section, um, such as a private dock is what, what is mentioned. Uh, the height of the, height does not exceed twenty feet and the ground coverage is well under two hundred square feet. It's actually only about seven square feet.
How about our dock experts in the board? What questions might you have of the applicant, Srep?
Two questions. How close is the end of this dock to the uh, existing dock to the east, to the west of this?
Um, it's quite a ways. Let me check on G I S. It's about two hundred feet.
And how close is this to the far side of the Gulf there?
The opposite side of the Gulf? Well, the Gulf is about two hundred and sixty feet wide of this location. Probably.
Because I believe, it's not under our jurisdiction, but I believe Massachusetts uh, uh, you can't have a, a dock that's over halfway across the uh, water.
That, that is correct, and this does not go more than halfway across the water. Um, see if I can move my screen. So from this, from the edge of the salt marsh, it's about two hundred and sixty feet across. We're only going out twenty-four plus ten is thirty-four, forty-four feet. So we're going forty-four feet across a width where it's twen- two hundred and sixty.
Okay.
Good point, Charlie. Who else? Can I hear Mike, Dickey or not?
No, I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, I thought I heard a little. The other comments from the board or, or questions of Jeff? You've been to the Conservation Commission?
We have, yes, and they did approve it.
And we have the uh, whatever order of conditions that were.
I'm not sure I've provided that, but I, I will.
Good idea, I think.
Yes.
You know, just so we have it on record. But they had no uh, did they have issues or concerns?
Um, no, we didn't make any revisions based on the meeting, so it was, it was continued in the first hearing.
Okay. Now, Charlie's question is, was, okay, yeah, it's this box down here that shows it going out into the, this is where you get the forty-four feet? If, if I look at that squared off box above the uh, legend down at the bottom, um, where it shows the dock and then the gangway. That's forty-four feet from what? Just for my record.
Yeah, so be- so beginning, this is, this area here is, is a lawn, and then you have salt marsh that were, which is about, say, a hundred and forty feet of salt marsh. And then the Gulf from that point is about two hundred and sixty feet wide to the salt marsh on the other side. So we're, we're only going out into that, into the Gulf about forty-four feet from this location here to here.
From that light blue line.
Yeah, the pier only goes ten feet into the Gulf, and then you have the removable gangway and the removable float.
Okay. Okay. Uh, anybody else? Questions of Jeff?
Hi, Woody, is this John here? Just one quick question on there, where it's uh, two separate parcels, just to make sure the board or the app could just reference the right goes with the, the house parcel, so that if for some reason they're ever separated, it doesn't, uh, you know, the, the use of the dock is also eliminated? You know what I mean? So just so it's referenced the right way for the, because it's a secondary use of the house, so therefore, if the if it becomes two separate parcels with two separate owners, the use wouldn't apply.
And how large is the lot across the street that's, that's anchoring the dock? Square footage wise?
Um, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay. And this is in the um, B?
To the residence B.
So it's twenty thousand square feet. Residence B requires thirty-five, so the only way it could be subdivided, well, you could subdivide it and just have somebody buy it, but it'd probably be merged. Would it not? I mean, it's, it's not buildable.
Right, but I'm saying they, they, they're actually, the street is separate them, so you can't really, they don't physically connect, so that you just have to address it, so that you, you know, the, the existing lot is a standalone lot where the home is. So that, again, the, the lot across the street could be sold without affecting the existing lot where the houses. So just uh, just so the board's aware.
Okay, it's, that's a good point. Your client's aware, Jeff?
Uh, we are aware, yes. Yep. So I think the point is that this, this lot needs to remain with the house.
Or the dock rights go away.
Right, yeah. You know, the, the, this property was sold as, you know, even though it's made up of multiple parcels, it was all sold under one deed. And I, I don't think they have any intention of selling that piece of land. It's intended to remain as one.
Makes sense. That's a good point. Other questions? Okay, I don't have any. Cassandra, again, anybody in the audience?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion then to continue this until April fourth, at which time I will have a draft decision prepared. Okay, Woody Chitikai?
Charlie Aggins and I.
Lee Darstai.
Michael Dickey, I.
Okay, so that's, that's continued. I'm now going to again recuse myself um, and turn this over to Dave McMorris, okay?
Okay, the next hearing is um, thirty Forest Notch. And applicants are Diane and John Roach. Could you promote them and any representatives they have?
Uh, good evening. Uh, John Toriyaki, uh, Toriyaki Architectural Design.
Okay, so.
And um, I believe the homeowners are also in the audience. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen to introduce the project and go over the special permit request.
Yeah, John, I, I have a question.
John, I I have a question first.
Sure.
The application says it's a petition for a use special permit under eight seven B. Is that incorrect? It's just a straight special permit, right?
It's a straight special permit. Uh, my apologies, that was due to uh I think the application, the sections changed and we weren't, yes, it was meant to be the next one, not the use special permit, the regular special permit.
Okay.
Uh, my apologies.
Okay.
Uh, would be happy to uh submit a corrected one.
Now, just put a check mark, we're fine.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, if you're great.
Sounds good. Uh. So here is the the plot plan of the property, uh showing the buildings and the context and the the structure and its current nonconformity. It's on tourist uh the thirty-fourth notch, which is off of Forest Avenue. And um the property right now is nonconforming uh in a few aspects, as noted on the application, uh with the rear setback on the west side, the um north side setback. And it's also nonconforming uh with respect to uh lot coverage, so it's thirty point nine percent. And um it's also nonconforming with respect to lot size. Uh, it's fourteen thousand sixty-nine square feet. So from a footprint perspective, the only change being proposed is the small covered porch being added here, shown in red, about hundred and eight square feet of porch. And to balance our uh coverage numbers, we are take on the from a uh an impervious coverage standpoint, we are taking out a concrete patio so that we don't impact the um total lot coverage uh ratio. We don't make it any worse. In fact, we improve improve it very slightly. Uh, but it still stays nonconforming. So no other building footprint changes are proposed other than the uh small covered porch.
Okay.
And then just going into the architectural drawings, this is primarily an architectural project, meaning that we are essentially modifying the uh roof lines of the house. So here's the existing house uh view from the uh existing front driveway. We are essentially proposing a steeper gable roof going over the house footprint, most of the footprint except this rear portion uh with dormers to create uh uh basically a bedroom level above the footprint, taking advantage of the footprint of the existing house without having to uh do an addition. Just a summary of the existing nonconforming footprint, which is about nine hundred seventy-four square feet. And the um, there's no change in that. And then uh the second floor, proposed second floor footprint that would be nonconforming is approximately five hundred and seven square feet with varying roof lines, but just uh from a footprint standpoint, that's the total area. And we arranged the 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 building facades existing at the bottom, proposed at the top, so that we can do a side-by-side comparison. So this is the existing front or east side elevation, which has ha- has about seventy-seven square feet of nonconforming facade area. And proposed is about hundred and thirty-one square feet. Here is the proposed front facade with the steeper gable roof and the shed dormers. By the way, the height difference is currently to the midpoint of the main roof, it's fifteen point nine feet from average grade. And proposed uh height to the midpoint of the highest roof, which is this dormer, is twenty-four point seven feet. And moving on to the 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 right side elevation, which is the north side, the ex- most of it is currently nonconforming, it's about a thousand and eighty square feet. Existing and proposed nonconformity with the dormer extension would be about fifteen hundred and one.
That's fifteen hundred and one total.
Total. Uh, yeah, total. Right, so it's another, uh, I believe it's another let me go back to that facade. Right, it it's roughly another four hundred and twenty square feet or so, the net increase. And then the rear elevation, west side elevation existing nonconforming is about nine hundred sixty-eight, proposed is about fourteen eighteen. About a thirty-one percent increase. And then on the left side or the south side of the house, existing is about three eighty-nine, proposes about four forty-seven. And here is the the view of that proposed front porch, which is conforming, so it's not part of the facade areas. Uh, so essentially, that summarizes the project. I'd be happy to uh go back to any of the drawings and answer additional questions. Oh, by the way, uh, one last note, uh, the owners did submit an email from their neighbor at twenty-seven Forest Notch, um essentially expressing no concerns for the project that was submitted to the board earlier today.
I didn't see that. You said it was from what, seven seventeen, Forrest?
Uh, twenty-seven Forest Notch, which is this house right here.
Okay.
Directly to the south.
Yes, apologies. I didn't get that out to the board today, but we have received two emails in support of the project.
And John, I thought I heard I heard a couple of different numbers, but you said the total increase in facade was at one point I wrote down five oh seven, what was it?
Oh, sorry, uh, yeah, five oh seven is essentially the the second floor footprint area that's resulting from the project that is nonconforming over the existing first floor footprint, which is nine seventy-four. Currently, this area exists, it's just inside the attic of the house, whereas I I thought that would be helpful to compare in terms of, since we are creating a usable floor as to what that reflects onto the new floor.
Could could you total the nonconforming new uh uh side side face faces front and back? Well, restating it, what's the difference between the nonconforming uh facades now and what it will be? All of them?
All of them, okay, um. Yeah, I can total them up as we're looking at it. Uh, I have them broken up on four sheets. So um, if you could just take a minute, I'll I'll just quickly add them up. First, I'll do the uh uh nonconforming existing um. The total nonconforming existing ends up being twenty-five fourteen. I'm just adding up the lower areas. Now I'm gonna add up the higher, the high section, the upper section of the proposed total. The proposed total is thirty-four ninety-seven. And the existing total is twenty-five fourteen.
And so that's how big a percentage increase?
Uh, nine hundred eighty-three net increase percentage-wise. Looks like thirty-nine percent. Let me just confirm that. Yes, it's a thirty-nine percent increase total.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, any questions from the board?
Um, I just have a comment to make. I am the abutter that is facing the I'm the closest abutter to this uh increase in the um, and I have seen the plans and I have talked to my neighbors. And um I don't have, I as an abutter don't have any issues with the um with the proposed new um designs for the property.
Thank you.
And um, John, if you want to go back to that plot plan real quick, just that showed where the other uh butters are. So we did talk to the Quinzani's up behind us, so they sit on Forest Ave and just, you know, kind of had a conversation with them just to make sure they didn't have any issues um either, because that was important to us. And I didn't ask them to send um an email, but I did talk to Stephen and his wife, and they didn't have any issues. If that's important to to you to get something in in writing the board, you know, we we could do that, but we did we did have a conversation with them.
And who are the emails from?
I believe one of the emails was from the Maxies.
Yeah, so the Mac.
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, Chad Balog, who's at the top of the street, I think he's six forest notch and then
Further down, okay.
Uh, and then the Carneys directly across the street from us.
Over here.
And Chad sent it, I think he sent his directly to the planning board, which may not be the, that may not be this board, so I can I could get the email from him and then forward it to Cassandra.
Okay, great. Um, any anything else from the board members?
I just want to make one note. I looked at these plans um last week because it's right next door and um they didn't have where the houses were, so I sent an email to Cassandra and asked the that the site plan be updated. So um I just want to make a comment that one of our, one of our requirements is is that the structures are all delineated on the site plans. And um if that can just be something that's checked when we get the plans in, it we it's very helpful. I mean, I happen to know where all this these were, but to be able to look at this, I think it's always helpful.
It is, and it's unfortunately um fairly common that we get plans without them.
We'll try to do a better job next time. I know this comes up often. Uh, we did correct it this time and submitted the update, but uh, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Uh a thirty-four percent increase is substantial. I think if you, if the neighbors to the uh where our west uh uh have a view, if they were, submit them, it would uh, I think be useful.
These neighbors, and I should note that this rear wing of the house is staying at its existing height. That's an existing um family room, that that closest wing, we're not going over that piece, just as a side note.
Um, also, for a practical point, the the neighbors to the north on Forest are up a hill.
Way up.
It's a significant hill um that the uh the it's the top parcels are on Forest, and then there's a a big notch, which um has a big slope, so much so that the children can sled on this, that's how steep the hill is. So the people to the rear are are actually quite far away.
Okay. Any other comments from the board or questions? All right, is there anyone in the audience that has a question, Cassandra?
There's not.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to add? All right, hearing none, I'll move that we continue the hearing until our April meeting.
I'll second it.
On favor, Dave McMorris, I.
Charlie against an eye.
Lee Darst eye.
Michael Dickey eye.
Matt Watkins eye.
All right. And
I'm back.
Good. So this uh thirty-fourth notch is continued. We'll have a draft decision next month. Just that I'm sure John will explain to the applicants how we work with that procedure. Um but you can expect a draft next in April.
Okay. Well, now that we're back, we have three decisions uh to consider tonight. Would like uh approval of the meeting minutes uh from February. Make sure that April fourth is our next meeting looks okay in people's calendars. And just post you briefly on a special meeting we have as a zoning board on the twenty-first of this month to review some proposed bylaw changes by the uh bylaw committee. But let's first deal with the three uh decisions that have been drafted by Matt Lee and Charlie. If that's okay with you guys, and the first decision is um on forty-nine James Lane that Matt has drafted.
Yep, so um you know, with forty-nine James Lane, just as a rec- just to recall, it was an eight point seven uh B and um largely what contributed to their need for relief was the curvature of the lot line um on the parcel, so I think the board largely agreed that it was a de minimis uh increase uh largely caused by that curvature of the lot line. And so I drafted the decision to um to explain that and uh and to grant a special permit uh for that application, so if um anyone has any comments or edits to it, I'm happy to um
I thought it was a good one, and I didn't have any myself, but we'll see what other people say.
I I read it. I I had no issues with it. That was fine.
Same here.
Charlie and Lee?
I don't have any edits to it. I thought it would succinct and address all the issues.
Me too.
Okay, so with that, I would make a motion to approve the decision as drafted by Matt Watkins.
Second.
And movement seconded Woody Chitakai?
Dave McMorris, I.
Lee Darst eye.
Michael Dickey eye.
Okay. The um second decision uh is on ADA Nichols Road uh to renovate a dwelling uh increasing its coverage. Lee Darst drafted that decision. Everybody, I assume, has had a chance to read it.
Um, this was a proposed um where there are only uh where the applicants are just increasing the side of the dormers on the garage in the setback. And um it, we had discussed it that it was um the facade increases are very minimal, three point eight percent, um six point seven percent. And in the garage, there's in one side on the back, there's a decrease of one percent. Um, so the discussions were that this was a very de minimis increase in the setbacks. Um, there is a note on here. I did, I thought that this was also a a site plan that didn't have any uh delineation of uh where the other structures were on the property. I had actually left a space thinking that I couldn't remember whether we requested that they submit them or not. So since they didn't make any additional submissions, I can delete that um.
Un- unless we want that as part of the record.
I guess that's up to the board. I I thought we asked for it last, the last hearing, but I I don't, I guess we didn't. I included that because the the site plans that I had did not have any um delineation of the abutting structures.
What do other people feel?
This has come up several times. Maybe we should ask Cassandra to look at this, the site plans, and if they don't show the. Adjacent structures to. Tell the applicant to. Send us new ones, so. Right.
I'm gonna make note of that.
I mean, it appears that it's Merrill. And Merrill doesn't include any of them on their site plans.
But they've got to. As Charles.
I think there's two problems in that. This, I think it's important that we have them, but also in the application. On page three. Site plan G requires boundary lines, owners, locations, dimensions of all buildings. Driveways, parking lots on immediately adjacent properties. And it says, yes. But they've done that and they haven't. I think they need to pay a little bit more attention to that.
I think we could approve the decision conditioned on within the week or within a week. Of getting in a revised site plan showing the neighboring properties. You know, I yeah, I do think we have to sort of be more stringent about this because it's relevant oftentimes. This is certainly a. Topographically challenged piece of property, but nevertheless.
And they're, you know, they're not even nowhere close to the sidelines, so it's not. Of great concern with this particular project, but.
But it's 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 good practice. I think we have to be consistent.
I agree.
So are we comfortable, maybe possibly. Probably approving this decision condition. That within the next seven days, a revised site plan come in showing neighboring properties. What is it within two hundred feet or three hundred feet? There's some. You know, limitation. I mean, if you were a mile away, you wouldn't have to show it, but I can't remember. Whatever, whatever the bylaw says, it's. If it, John Hound, can you remember?
I thought it was two hundred feet.
Yeah, that's.
But I I we could double check and.
Okay, well, whatever whatever the bylaw says, I I think that Merrill has got to got to do this, and maybe this will. Help remind Merrill to do this on other applications because they are one of two. Go to engineering firms that we see. Every every month. So I would make such a motion. That we approve this conditioned on. On getting in a revised site plan showing neighboring properties within two hundred feet of this. Location.
Well, second.
Moving seconded Woody Chitikai.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, the third one, again, I'm recused on this one seventy six Summer Street. Charlie's done the decision, so I will turn it over to. Matt, are you the one who did that? No, no. Charlie wrote it. Okay. Charlie, why why don't you just take over this? I'm gonna mute myself right now and you can. Take over as our third regular member and.
Okay. So this is Summer Street. Property, the sole issue is they're they're moving. A tearing down a two car garage and putting up another two car garage approximately the same. Of round footage. The only issue is that it's. In the floodplain, the whole property is in the floodplain, but all of the area conditions are met. And the move movement. The old garage did was nonconforming on the. South side. And the new garage that moved just a bit, so it is now everything is. All the conditions are met. And the new garage will is being built with flood vents and all equipment will be. Up above the base floodplain elevation. So. This is improvement for no area nonconformities and improvement to meet the floodplain. And therefore. I thought it. Should be approved.
I had just one comment, Charlie. On the first page. Where it says in attendance for the hearing. You have Kellyanne Devine, applicant. I think that was a different hearing.
That was the James Lane one. So this was the Santa Cruz.
But it's fine to take her out.
I can correct that.
Other than that, I thought everything was great.
Yeah, Charlie, I. I thought it would look good as well. I don't have any. Additional.
Nobody else has any further comments?
No, it was succinct and. Covered all the points.
All right, I move that we approve this decision.
Second.
And all those in favor? Charlie.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
So I'm, we're. I'm back, I guess. A couple of other things. How about minutes? From February seventh. Did anybody have edits? In either substantive, which we should discuss or. Sort of grammatical, which we can forward to Cassandra if there are any.
I I didn't see anything, Woody.
I didn't see anything either.
I didn't. Anybody else see anything that would be worthy of a brief mention?
No.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from February seventh is. Drafted by Cassandra.
Seconded.
Moving seconded on favor, Woody Chitikai.
Charlie against an eye.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, now, how does April fourth look from or any conflicts that known conflicts for our next zoning meeting? This, this one is going to be. I predict, you know, we we sort of lurch from. One hour meetings to three hour meetings. This is going to be closer to the latter, right, John? I I don't want.
Yeah, but we agree with that.
Why is that?
Well, this is Black Horse Lane and they have. Proposed, I think, a common driveway. I don't want to misstate it, but a common driveway without frontage and. Town council has rendered opinions. I think it's in litigation from the planning board standpoint. Is that right, John? And never.
Yes, they did. They were in front of the planning board. And at that time, they were denied the common driveway application, but simultaneously they applied for building permit. For the three lots, three individual permits, so one for each lot, and I I denied them. As well, so that they're taking the building permit.
Appeal, yeah.
Nile and appeal into the zoning board. So that's.
So John will will be here next time, as will Carolyn Murray. She's been put on alert. Week or so ago by Cassandra that this is where we're really going to need. Advice from town council, both on its present decision advising the planning board, but also. Where they may stand on on this matter, but it's certainly. Going to be dueling lawyers and. So on and so forth. So I think you'll be. Educated in terms of some of the law. We don't deal with. Frontage a lot or lack of, but in this case. That is an issue. So I think that's going to go on, and if we get the doc. That we continued again at one eighty five Jerusalem Road. That again is going to be litigious, I think. So. You're all familiar with it. I don't know what the I don't know if they're modifying their proposal. I mean, I. Not gonna. Try to guess, but if it's. Kind of close to what they came in with, I I think it's going to be lively. So I'm just sort of. Alerting. Us all that we're going to have, and I don't know, Cassandra, do we have other hearings as well, I suppose, that they're already filed, right?
Yes.
Is there anything that kind of jumps out at you is? More than routine or more than rote? I have material.
I think that there is one application that. Would. Or could use a good set of eyes isn't just cut and dry. For. Sixty two Spring Street, they're looking to put on a porch. But other than that. I I would agree that I think it's going to be. A long hearing.
Yeah, so just just be prepared. I don't think there's any way to sort of shortcut this one unless somebody makes a radical change in their proposal. And I'm kind of guessing the way these people are heading, not so. They're they're lawyering up. The other thing is that on the twenty first of this month, we have a meeting with the zoning bylaw committee, which is proposing a series of. Changes to our zoning bylaws to, I guess, let us know what's going on, educate us and hear. Our concerns. Again, this is sort of a work in progress. I'm not sure much is. Etched in stone here. They are going to different town boards and and find trying to find out the. You know, with, you know, the sentiments. But height is a major issue. The use of special permits to approve. Certain uses is 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 an issue. Parking, particularly the the village parking. By right, within five hundred feet, I think may be an issue. I don't know. So there are a lot of these issues that are. In a way, in my estimation. Not a complete picture. In other words, we're not getting a complete picture of use changes. We're getting a. You know, a sliver. We're not getting a complete picture maybe of height changes, but or any of these other chain or parking, goodness knows. So. I would ask you whenever the material comes and Cassandra, when do we? I mean, are they making any changes or are we dealing with what's already been issued? Will we be dealing with what's been issued?
So the. Planning board is going to be reviewing it tomorrow night. I would assume that if any changes are to be made, it would be made at that point. Which obviously is occurring before. That meeting. They're also going before the advisory board on the fifteenth.
Okay. So we'll but expect to get that. At the end of this week or the beginning of next week, it sounds like to me, right?
Yes, I'll probably send out the meeting invitation tomorrow. But any materials I'll send.
I would urge you to think about unintended consequences. In a couple of cases, I think I may have. Come across some what ifs. I don't know, and I don't want to prejudice our our discussion, but I I urge you to think about. Is are these bylaw changes ones that we can? You know, administer fairly without. Without something creeping in and saying whoops. I mean, nobody's intending it to be that way, goodness knows, but I think we've. Rendered enough decisions impacting these broader issues. And John, you're going to be there, right? Well, he's muted, but. He's shutting the door. Maybe that means he's got something. Something secret to say. John, you're going to be at the nineteenth?
I know tomorrow, the planning board is having some discussion about that as well. So they have a meeting at the Will Clark Center, a hybrid meeting. And I think the nineteen. I'll probably be there as well.
Oh, I I where do I say the nineteenth? The twenty first, when we meet, are you going to be?
Yes.
In attendance, yes, because I I I think. When you start talking about height and what, you know, we're talking about dwelling heights, commercial heights, garage heights. This, that. You know, kind of flat roof, peaked roof. I mean, there are a lot of issues, a lot of nuance. I'm just picking that as an issue. But. They're replete. So I'd like to. You know, get your clearly get your perspective, John, and and Carolyn Murray's perspective. On on these, I don't think the planning board is probably going to be in attendance. My understanding is they. May have been advised because they're in litigation, don't go before another board and say something that. You know, may be repeated. In court in six months. I I don't know, but. We may not get the benefit of their thinking, but John, I think you can. Help inform us.
Yep, I will, as I say, I'll be at the planning board tomorrow. And then I'm sure either. At our next meeting or somewhere in between, we can talk.
Yeah.
And Woody, wasn't there a woman from Carolyn's office who? Is kind of. Hired in. On this process or did that not come?
Oh, the Judge Judith Cutler.
Yeah, I thought I last heard that she was kind of. Put it, you know, kind of leading the charge.
She may be there in attendance in lieu of of Carolyn on the twenty first. I don't know. But I certainly know know on on April fourth Carolyn's going to be there. So we've got a couple of these things that are going to require. Going to school or reading up or prepping ourselves, I think. But you're right. No, that that person who was on the zoning bylaw group is. Was the chief justice of the land court. So she probably knows as much about zoning as. Anybody we're ever going to meet. Zoning at large, you know, and. And and I don't know. I mean, you got to keep in mind, too, that our zoning bylaws are are most of them are fifty years old. Last revised about two years after. Well, maybe forty five years, two years after the. Chapter forty eight was overhauled in nineteen seventy five. They've been very modest. Minor changes made to our bylaws since then, and so they're woefully. Out of date in terms of case law and so on and so forth. And. You know, it's.
On the. They may be old, but they're. I think pretty useful. And they're clear enough so that we can interpret them and. And applicants can read them and understand what they.
Yeah, what I don't know, Dave, is where the I mean, well, I do know in a way. But how has case law gone beyond the written word? Of chapter forty eight, modified it.
I don't think. But I mean, there's some. Some areas. Where it has, I think somewhat in the arbitrary and capricious. Pieces of. Special permits, but. Then, you know, I don't think generally speaking, when there's, we have a bylaw. Issue that comes up. That has case law issues with it. We get the case law. You know, the applicants or the people opposing the applicants give us the case law to look at. But I think our, you know, on the on the whole. I think our bylaws are pretty good.
Okay.
And it's the latest status to present this overhaul at the May.
That's the intention. Is that right, Cassandra?
Yes.
John, yeah. So my other concern, and this has nothing to do with our meeting per se, is that while public forums have been held. And so on and so forth, I think most people in town are really largely unaware of what's being. What's on the table. Either content wise or even topics. And that always worries me because people. Oftentimes come into a town meeting and. Nobody told me about this. They've had the warrant for three weeks, but nobody told me about this. What does this mean? And and I I I hope. It's not the fault of the bylaw committee, but it's it's a dynamic that we have to live with. Right, David, or am I wrong?
It's, I think that's the first thing you hear. It's, I think that's the first thing you hear anytime bylaw changes come up at town meeting. You know, it comes as a complete shock, even though there's been twenty public hearings.
Yeah, I mean, I think they have a better story to tell as far as the promotion of the meetings, but I think then I guess we'll see how it's presented to us. I don't know if they're looking for endorsements from different boards or
Sure.
education, but I think the thing that they really need to do is to drill down each substantial change to a how does this impact me as a homeowner? Because I think, you know, you had a lot of conspiracy theories and whatnot, just from somebody that says, hey, well, this could mean that I couldn't do this and and then the.
All my rights will be taken away.
Hey, well, yeah, why would we vote for this? We're going to hamstring our rights. So if they don't kind of present it in a way that this is the change, but this is what it means to you, then that's going to be tough to swallow, you know?
Well, it's not just that either. It's how the bylaws, the language is written. I think there's things in our bylaws that substantively need to be addressed. Like, I think that town hall parking lot issue is a huge one that needs to be looked at.
A town hall parking lot? Town park.
Not the town hall, the town town parking lot. You know, anybody who wants to build a development within five hundred feet doesn't have to worry about parking, which is ridiculous. But you know, other than the substantive issues, I think the most important thing in bringing up new bylaws is making sure that the language is clear. I think my feeling is that anybody who lives in town ought to be able to read the bylaws and understand what they mean. And it's essentially, it's extremely important for us to be able to base decisions on clear bylaws. You know, so far, I think we've been very successful at that. We very seldom run into any kind of appeals that are much substance, so. I haven't seen the bylaws and how they're written, but that's the biggest concern for me.
Yeah. And in a couple of cases, I think they've almost oversimplified too much. I I don't want to get into it, but there have been a couple of instances I was reading where you couldn't tell if it was residential. Residentially focused, commercially focused, everything. And it was sort of one one size fits all. That may be the maybe good, that's simple. It may not be so good. And I think that's what we're going to have to do because we are going to have to apply these bylaws. They may be writing them, but we're going to live with them.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we have a an obligation to not just endorse, but to challenge, to be sure that we don't say a year from now or two years from now, oh, my God. How did I let that? So no, I mean, it's it's, I don't, this is not something one person could possibly do. I mean, it's really sort of a group think thing.
Yeah. Well, I do remember many, many years ago, some I think there were conservation bylaws where people were complaining that you know, if if you read this thing, it means I can't mow my lawn. And if you read it literally, that is exactly what it meant. So that, you know, eventually they changed things to make it a little more clear about what you could and couldn't do. But language is important.
Yeah.
I think it's very good that we have this judge involved. I expect it should be great help with language.
Yeah, I do too. So at any rate, we are going to really not come together for for a couple of weeks and and that will be on the twenty-first and in the meantime, we'll have a chance to go through this and take notes and deal with this piece by piece by piece, but anyway, I mean, but this is something we're going to live with for the next five or ten years. Some of you more than others, but nevertheless, John Allen, you'll still be here.
That's good.
So at any rate, that that that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to lecture. I'm just saying that read it more than once, whatever it says.
They had a meeting at Wilbur Commons on this, and they did indicate that they hope to have some changes before this spring's town meeting, so it isn't way off in the future, but the majority of the changes they have in mind will come up in the fall town meeting. At this town meeting, I believe they're going to the big, one of the bigger changes is in height, and that's mostly on how you're where you measure the 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 base of your height.
Well, it's also taking the maximum height down five feet is what's at least on the table today. Across the board.
I didn't realize that. I thought there was, yeah, keep thirty-five, but the question is, how are you measuring?
Or right now, we have forty feet to the peak. They would measure it to the peak for thirty-five. Whether that lasts stays or not, I don't know. But it that's also a significant change or a change. I don't want to dramat dramatize it too much, but it's that's one of those, what are you doing or why are you doing it kind of things that we'll have to, you know?
Yeah, and I I think the thirty-five feet to the peak is pretty common in several other towns in the area. Would be Citroen, Hingham, Hall, and I think Noel as well. So that's 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 not too unusual, but.
Right. But but I think that's all got to be explained. That we're not taking somebody's right, well, not necessarily taking somebody's rights away. But I don't I don't want to get, I mean, you know, we can talk about that on the twenty-first, but there are some of these issues that are more than just subtle. But we can I've got my own points of view, but I I'm going to wait and see if they've made any further modifications. We can maybe share some thoughts. So at any rate, with that said, anybody have have any other business?
Yes, I do. So the board received a letter requesting withdrawal for the forty-nine order special permit since the variance application was approved. So I was just looking to see if you guys could vote to.
Permit to withdraw?
Yeah.
Without prejudice or it doesn't matter, but yes, I'll make such a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Woody Chitik? Oh, would you have a second? Okay, moving seconded, Woody Chitikai?
David Morrissey.
Lee Darstai.
Well, I haven't heard from Matt or Charlie or Mike.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Charlie, you on board?
I guess so. I'm not sure what what I'm on board.
It was allowing them to withdraw. This is forty-nine border across from Atlantica. They had applied for special permit, but in the interim, we've approved a variance for the for the project, so the the special permit application was kind of floating out there as an active but or or
I'm on board.
Yeah, so okay, that's just housekeeping. Okay, anything else, Cassandra?
That was it.
All right, thanks for reminding me. I totally forgot that.
I have a question. We got a copy of the letter about the the height of the wall on the the Linden Jerusalem Road property. What happened with that, John?
Well, one applicant, I think it was four eighty-eight Jerusalem Road, built the wall higher than he said he was, so I issued him a citation and then the following day he filed the zoning complaint regarding his neighbor. That their wall that they built four or five years ago was too high. And that they wanted me to enforce the zoning regulations on on that neighbor, so I'll probably go out next week to the site, look at it, but again, that was permitted worked on on an existing wall, and I think well enough will be left alone, but that that's what that's why that that generated.
So you haven't heard from him in terms of any intention to comply with your order?
I think he's going to comply. I told him, he said he was not going to appeal my decision and that he was going to apply, so now we're just waiting for him to apply. Because with the zoning violation, there's other permits that he wants to do on the house. I I'm questioning whether it shows permits until we have the zoning violation.
Yeah.
So that's that's probably his next motivation because there was an application for a dormer to be added. I'll have to look at that pretty closely because I I think it's really pushing the edge as to as to what we have there, so. It 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 doesn't seem to slow down, so.
I went by there today and there's they're still there. It's still as high as it always was.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's one thing if it were permitted five years ago. Neighbor A. Neighbor B, if it was not permitted and and went ahead, I think that puts it in a different it isn't just so much the outcome, it's the process. That 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 is different. But I'll leave it at that, but I mean, I think that's.
Was the
Yeah.
Was the neighbor he's complaining about, were they the people who filed the the appeal?
Well, there was no, there was no no neighbor that filed a complaint on his work. I just went to inspect it and said you had a permit for you know, thirty-five feet of stone wall. You built a hundred and twenty-five feet of stone wall and it's too high, so here the neighbor had called me to ask about it, but just to call ask about it, they didn't complain one way or the other. They didn't know, they just had a question. And then then once I sent him an enforcement order, he the following day, you know, submitted the complaint about the neighbor.
I just didn't know if it was the same neighbor that, you know, we had all the appeals with before that appealed.
Yes. Those are two two neighbors that are still not getting along. But there was one other neighbor to another side that was complaining, but that was that was a third party that was was getting involved over there in the Bermuda Triangle, maybe is the word for it.
Oh, boy. Oh, well. Okay, I I mean. Okay, so that may end up for us. Do you think they'll appeal your decision? You don't know.
I I he said he wasn't going to appeal the decision, but he still asked, you know, at some point, the decision has to be enforced too.
Right.
He's got to take down either, you know.
I'm certain he doesn't want to want to lean put on his property or anything, you know, for failing to comply. Which is a.
Yeah, I think eventually he'd like to probably do some other work on his property, so until we clear up the zone, we can't do that.
Yeah. So we're getting into the busy season, sounds like. It's always a busy season anyway as we approach June and July, people want a decision right now because they've got a contractor lined up next week. And, you know, so on and so forth, so. As opposed to apply in the fall. So at any rate, listen, we'll talk in two weeks' time. And certainly you can feel free to Sandra, let's talk to Carolyn Murray about who's going to be representing town council at at the twenty-first. I think we're going to need some guidance there.
I believe Judge Cutler is planning.
Okay, great, great. Okay. All righty, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Woody Chitikai?
David Morrissey.
Against an eye.
Michael Dickey, I.
Lee Lee Darstai.